Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for joining us. It is Wednesday, April 27th, 1:00 P.M. We are going to go ahead and get this meeting started. I will call this meeting to order. Again, thank you to my board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff, and a special shout-out to our IT and technical staff who are helping us out today. And every board meeting, we're appreciative of you all. So, thank you for joining us on this special meeting today. And so, as we get started, I'll do, I will read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon. Thank you for joining us, staff, board colleagues, and any guests that we have either in person or online. Before I continue with roll call, just want to give a special shout-out to all of our administrative professionals out there in the district and, and just out there in general. You all keep this district running and make sure that we are doing a great job as a district. So, thank you for all the work that you do to make sure that we are a great district. And so, just thank you for all your work. With that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Great, thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve today's special agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded questions. Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Great, thank you. So, we'll jump right into our agenda. First on our agenda is under Board Updates and Approvals, is a recommendation that the Kansas City, Kansas, that the Kansas City Board of Education accept bids from CJ Industries in the amount of $2,210,000 for boiler replacement at Washington High School, Windout High School, Argentine Middle School, Central Middle School, and Rosedale Middle School, as submitted by Mr. Wayne Correll, Dr. Ralph Turan, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. For this has come before us previously, so would entertain a motion unless there's any questions from, yes, Ms. Page?
I, I have a question. Would the libraries be under this, or will they come under a different program? Because we, on that main library, the boiler is old. So, I didn't know if it would fall under this, or it falls under another.
Thank you. I see Doug Clements, Clements coming to the microphone.
Good afternoon, everybody. There's actually not a boiler at the main library. That would be a different type of system. And I had responded that we don't usually get a lot of problems in that building. We don't get a lot of complaints, so.
Well, I, I know we went to visit once, and she was saying there was something wrong with the system. I didn't know if it was a boiler or what.
Yeah.
But the lady who managed it.
We'll check on that, but yeah, I, I went back and checked for work orders and see, and we'll make sure we have a good working system there. Sure.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Mr. Lopez, I have a question, please.
Please, Dr. Nguyen.
Is the company, is a local company, or where is it?
It is actually. This is a CJ Industries, is a woman-owned enterprise, local, within the boundaries of USD 500.
Okay. And just to reassert, when we did go visit the main library, they said that they needed a new boiler. So, that's kind of interesting. You're saying they don't even have a boiler?
Correct.
So, I wonder if you were talking about that.
We'll check, we'll check and see where the confusion is on that, yeah, but we'll get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda, under Policy Review, we'll, we'll kind of take both of these hand-in-hand. We do have on the agenda, third read of the Code of Conduct, but I know we were discussing also the dress policy, or the dress code policy, I'm sorry. So, just want to open up to conversation. I know there were some emails, and during the last board conversation, there was discussion and recommendations from board members to potentially look at other policies on dress code that other districts might have, or that may be out there that we could learn from. I know some of those had been sent to Dr. Stubblefield and the team, so just we'll open it up for conversation, discussion from the board regarding the dress code policy and what, the direction that the board would like to give to Dr. Stubblefield and team regarding the dress code policy, along with the Code of Conduct. If it is the board's will to have a third read of the Code of Conduct, we could do that today. Otherwise, we can hold as we continue to work through the dress code policy to make sure we have that ironed out in conjunction with the dress, with the student code of conduct.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Russell, go ahead, and then Ms. Clark.
Twelve days ago, Janie Humphries made a motion to approve the second read, and that we would be provided language from Dr. Stubblefield and staff with input from the board. I have not seen any communication come across from leadership, district leadership. And so, with respect to the motion that was made and approved and moved by the entire board, I don't think that it's an appropriate thing to bring this back for a third read based on the direction that was given at that time, based on the motion. So, I'm a little, I'm still confused, because also at the planning meeting, we were told that it wasn't ready for a third read, because there was additional work needed to be done. And here it is the next day after the board meeting on the agenda. So, I, I just would like a little clarity and direction for what, when motions like that are made, why, not even why, but just like what, what is needed at this point?
So, I will share, Janie amended the motion to say that input will be received from leadership, board members, and others. And so, anything that I received, I sent on to Greg. Honestly, the only thing I received, Rachel, and we both had the same example, was the Lawrence policy, and I passed that on to Greg, but I had not received any other additional feedback, because typically, we work with Greg, because there's already a dress code policy, so he would have taken whatever feedback we would have given him and incorporated in our, incorporated into our current policy. And so, I think it was back for the third read because of the additional changes that were, the other work that was doing out, that was supposed to be done outside, and then also you gave some efficient, additional feedback. If the board does not want to move forward with the third read, that is not an issue. And then, if the board does not want this to come back until the dress code policy is finalized, we can do that as well. But I didn't receive any additional feedback, other than the example from Lawrence Public Schools. I did look at about 10 other districts, and that either their policies, they had uniforms. I looked at the districts that KU said we should compare ourselves to, because they have similar demographics, and the entire district had uniforms, so their dress code policies didn't really mirror it. And then, the, what we were looking for around specificity of what students can and could not wear. In this particular area, Lawrence was the only one that I could find. I didn't get to some of the other ones, but I did send any feedback that I received to Greg Goheen, because he typically will then put it in policy format and bring it forward. So, I think there was, I don't know if anybody else is planning to give feedback, because if we're just going to use that one, I think then Greg can move forward, and we can push pause and add it to a future agenda.
And to, to the extent, I guess, I walked in the middle of the discussion, so I apologize for being a little bit late. So, Ms. Russell, I think the issue is, is I think it was placed on the agenda so that there could be an additional board discussion about it. That would be the process for the next read, would be what would take place. You're correct that in between the last meeting where we discussed this, we were going to get feedback from board members, and I think we said "and others." The only follow-up feedback that I received was the email that you sent, and the information from Dr. Stubblefield relating to the Lawrence policy as an example, but without having some specific direction from the board as to whether they want to include some of the more specific language from the Lawrence policy, or some other variation. I think you brought up some additional questions or concerns about the uniform policy and some things like that. It's probably not ready to be, the dress code policy is probably not ready to be adopted or moved forward on until we have some further discussion. The secondary question is the student code of conduct, because the student code of conduct incorporates the dress code as part of the disciplinary code. Ordinarily, when we have additional changes to the student code of conduct that are suggested by the board, let's go back to Lisa Garcia to see, you know, whether there's any additional feedback or inconsistencies between what the board proposal is and the student code of conduct versus what the individual schools have. And I think, I believe it was in your email indicated there were some differences between what the different schools were doing, which was part of the discussion we had a couple weeks ago, I think, on this as well. So, the long version of the story is, I don't think we're ready for an approval of the dress code policy. The question is, and I think you still would have time in terms of the publication of the student code of conduct, from what I recall from Ms. Garcia's, you were saying, is whether you want to hold that in advance as well, while you sort out the student, the dress code issue. But I still think it's appropriate for the board to have additional conversation about the dress code, so that we can give good direction to administration as to what the board wants to see in that policy. You want to adopt something similar to what Lawrence has? Do you want to keep something more general in terms of what this, this school district currently has? Do you want to see the uniformity in terms of the different buildings, in terms of what that dress code looks like? I think that's the direction that needs to come from the board.
I will just say this in closing, and then I will allow other board members to speak. My recommendation would be, I heard Dr. Stubblefield when she said she didn't believe that we should go as, as far as Lawrence went with the dress code. The dress code from Marietta School Districts, which is number two, I believe, in my email that I provided yesterday to the board. It, it is very generic. It is very comfortable, and very much so gender-neutral as well. So, that would be a policy that I would say I would like to see us base off, as well as the elimination of uniforms at all of our school buildings. With that being said, I am very interested in the minutes, because when I re-watched the YouTube video, I think there is difference of what I believe the motion was said to have said, and what, what is being interpreted today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. Clark, and then Ms. Drew.
I just have a question. Is it possible that we could approve the third read for the Code of Conduct, and then hold back on the dress code as a part of it?
Yeah, you, you could do that. The only caveat to that is when you're approving the student code of conduct or the handbook, you're essentially approving it for publication, and if there's going to be a subsequent change to the dress code, there would have to then be a revision of that. So, that's the only pause I would have, is that, I mean, me, if, if the board is, and I believe the board is interested in modifying the, the dress code, or at least maybe they're not, that's, that's a board decision. If we're doing that, then I think you should do that before you approve the student code of conduct, so they don't do it twice, is my opinion.
Thank you.
But we can do it either way the board wants.
Thank you. I will go with your suggestion.
So, my comments are around the, the conversation about the schools, the four schools that do have uniforms.
I, I'm sorry, it's five. One of the IIs were out yesterday, and she just got me. Westport is the fifth one.
Okay, thank you. I, I personally would be interested in what our principals have to say versus us as a board making the decision to remove dress code, to remove uniforms from those schools. I don't know where their voice has been heard, but I struggle with us just making that decision. Our principals and, and community are very vocal, and so for us just to say, we're removing, moving uniforms, I struggle with that being our decision without touching base there. Secondly, I do agree that everything needs to be approved altogether. And then, my last point around the dress code is, with the information that's been collected, I personally would like to have something put together from Ms. Stewart, and maybe some touch base there with even our DEI, and I'm sorry, her name is slipping my mind, versus us as a board making that recommendation or putting that together. I think that those two people, that's their expertise, that's where they've been, and we've respected them for their roles in the past, and I don't think that we should miss that this time. So, that, that would be my recommendation, that they take that information, put their arms around it, and come with a recommendation to the board for what our dress codes should look like for going forward. I'm sorry, I said my last point. My other point is that we also have something that our administrators are able to use. So, it doesn't make, it doesn't matter what the words are in the book, if it's not something that our, our buildings are able to operate by. So, as we look at this, we also need to make sure that it makes sense for them as that policy goes into place.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Other, Ms. Page?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Russell. We still can make some suggestions, because she brought up things, we've had the same thing for centuries, and we do need to update and be modern, because things have changed, and we want to reflect that change. So, we, she can make suggestions. She had several. Lot of them were pretty good, that, you know, we can pass them on to Garcia, Stewart, but as well, they need a little help, too, to come up to modern times. So, I don't see anything wrong with that. And in terms of the dress code, yeah, we do need to talk to the other schools. Maybe some parents don't want to do it, but we got to do it quick, fast, and in a hurry. So, to give them that option. Because some have it, some don't, and we just got to figure out what's best for them.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Other thoughts from other board members? Dr. Nguyen?
Mr. Lopez, can I ask a question, please? It's not related to dress code?
Sure, thank you.
A group of students from Sligo came up, and I, I put this on the agenda request, but it, it never came to the top. Some of the students at Sligo, they have a vaping club. Is, is vaping considered tobacco use?
I believe so. When you look at different policies, they'll have some.
It is under our policy.
Yeah.
We, we've got a, our policy includes use of, I forget what the term is, I could pull it up here in a second, but devices, which would include.
Vaping.
Vaping devices. So, yes.
I'm, I'm just looking at this, the Code of Conduct, and I can't find any reference to vaping. So, is that something that needs to be added?
I think, let me, let, give me a couple of seconds while we're talking, I'll pull up the policy, because I think it's in the policy already. So, if it's not in the student code of conduct, that would be something we probably ought to make sure matches the policy. So, give me just a second, Dr. Nguyen.
And so, just to recap, while he's looking for, while Greg's looking for that, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Drew.
Thank you. And, and along with this, and one of the things I want us to consider, we are in the process of educating our students to prepare them for their futures. And a lot of our students are involved in programs like Diploma Plus, which is prepping them to be able to enter college. And one of the things we do want to consider in making our final decisions is, you have to lay the groundwork as to how you want the students to be able to behave, how you want them to dress. And if we go ahead and make modifications, but try to do it in an area that would be perfection for them to be prepared when they get involved in corporate America, I think it would be a good thing for us to look at that, and then to, to address how we can get them to be able to not necessarily wear the, according to how they are when they're at home, or they're out with friends, but in a professional way. And so, that's one of the things I'm asking the board to consider. I'm not saying that I'm in disagreement with everything, it's just that I want us to consider the direction in which we want to lay the groundwork for our students to be able to follow when they decide to graduate from high school, enter to college, and even to get into their lifestyles as they begin to work within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew.
So, Dr. Nguyen, board policy JCDAA, which relates to tobacco, to tobacco use primarily, does include electronic nicotine delivery systems, which would include vaping in it. So, that is prohibited by board policy, and considered a tobacco product on school property.
It's also on page 25, if I may. President Lopez, Dr. Stubblefield, and Greg, it's also on page 25.
Okay, because I'm on page 20. Okay, so just go to page 25.
Uh-huh. Yes, Dr. Nguyen says drug paraphernalia in a safe possession, use or possession with intent to sell, give or deliver.
Can you slow down just a minute, please? Just slow down a little. What'd you say, is that under drug paraphernalia?
Uh-huh, possession, dispersal, use.
Okay.
And then, in parentheses, it says vaporizer, vaping, or e-cigarette, in parentheses, examples.
It's number six?
Yes, ma'am. And then, there's a subset, letter A, and it's in that first.
I see it. Okay. And so, just for clarification, what offense is that? What's the, what is, what category does that go under?
Class three.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
I like Yolanda's suggestion that we give the suggest examples to Ms. Stewart and Ms. Salinas to go over and bring us back a, a recommended policy.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. So, if I'm hearing, I'm just going to try to summarize some of the things I'm hearing, and again, I want to make sure we're providing some direction to staff as well. What I'm hearing, and, and I, I think makes a lot of sense to put a hold on approving a third read on the Code of Conduct for now, so that we can continue to address the dress code policy, and ask Ms. Lisa Garcia Stewart to work with Ms. Kene Salinas from the DEI Department on some of the language, maybe bring in Mr. Goheen to make sure that we have the correct language for policy. But also, maybe reaching out to principals of the schools with uniforms, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ms. Clark, parents, did you say parents as well of?
Not necessarily parents. I would think that our principals would have, have heard from parents, but I know they would have a good sense of what's happening. I think some of the schools have even surveyed their parents at some point, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So, doing some of that, that work to get some feedback, especially, you know, if our administrators are the ones that are going to have to really work with our students on dress code, so getting their feedback would be important, if, if we haven't done so already, and maybe we have. Ms. Garcia Stewart could probably let us know on that. But giving it back to Dr. Stubblefield and, and leadership team to work through some of that with the recommendations that have come. Board, if there are additional thoughts, or questions, concerns, recommended language that you know of, or that you would like to share, please send those in to Dr. Stubblefield and Ms. Garcia Stewart, so that we can work through that as well. Don't want to cut the conversation, but I know we do want to get to some budget conversation today as well. But that, that sounds like the direction that the board would like to move forward with, push pause on the Code of Conduct, the third read anyways, and kind of continue to work through, and maybe at one of the upcoming meetings, bring back language on potential dress code policy.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Oh.
I, I am struggling, because I, this is the exact motion that was made last meeting. And so, what further direction or guidance needs to be provided? Because even at the last meeting, I stated, I would like to know the schools that have the uniforms, and also, if that creates an issue. Like, those are the exact things. And so, maybe it needed to come out of you or Yolanda's mouth, I'm not really sure, but that is what my request was last time. And so, I'm very confused of the process and what additional feedback needs to be provided to move this along, because that is essentially what I asked for, and what Janie's motion was at the last meeting.
Right.
And I'm finding myself frustrated, because, because this is the same conversation we had, that, hey, we should not move forward with the dress code policy and the student conduct for the purpose of getting additional feedback and allowing people to craft the language, and here we are today, having the same conversation. And so, I just want to make sure that this doesn't come back again as what, what does the board need to do, because I feel like we've had this conversation two, three times now.
Rachel, I appreciate you sharing your frustration, and I don't disagree that that was the exact motion. However, we were allowing time for feedback, and I will own that I didn't reach back out to board members or anybody else to say, hey, we need this. It came back this time, because there were some changes based off of the work that Lisa and her team did that was separate from the dress code. And so, when we bring it back, we will have language, we will, all of the feedback that we have currently, we will come with something to present to the board. But I did not reach back out. I was just kind of waiting to see when people would send information, and that's, the dress code portion, that's why that wasn't there. The other portion with the, just the Code of Conduct in general. I do want to get, not necessary clarification, but offer a perspective around the uniforms in the school with the uniforms. in the school with the uniforms. We can get principal perspective, but I will, I don't know if but is the right word. Principals change. And so if uniforms are something that we're allowing principals to determine, school by school, it can come up every year. If that is the, if that's philosophically where the board wants to go, I just want us to recognize that most of the principals, some of them actually of the schools that are there, it may be one that maybe was there when uniforms first started and the other ones inherited the building with the uniforms. So I just, clarity around that because other principals may come and say, hey, we want uniforms. Are we opening that up? I don't know all of the history. I wasn't here. I'm looking to like Ms. Page and Ms. Drew and others who may have been in the district. And I, I, I don't disagree we should get their perspective, but I don't know if, how that weighs with, if the board's desire is for us to move away from uniforms or to leave them there until they decide that. Because we may have some other principals. Honestly, I wouldn't be shocked if other principals don't email me and say, oh, can we have uniforms? And want to go that direction.
So my statement was clearly around the board making the decision of just removing uniforms from, forms from schools without having any conversations. I think for me, I feel like that would be out of place and disrespectful to those people that are running those schools. That, that's where that statement came from. So whoever, whoever actually makes that decision of where uniforms should be or however that's taken care of, I'm not asking for any change there. I, I know that one, one board member asked for that to be removed. I cannot support that without some other voices. So that's...
Okay. That gives me clarity on what we are asking of the principals, and we're not necessarily opening it up for other schools to say, I want uniforms. Is, if you've gotten feedback, is your community ready to move? Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's me. I...
Well, I'm only one board member, but I will say that if we want to, if we want to make this about parents or community, we can survey those folks. I, I brought it up because it was brought up to me from community members. So if the entire board would like to know, then let's do a survey. Like, but that's why I brought it up, was because it was put out in the community. Why do these schools have uniforms? So.
And I'm not asking for surveys. So I just, I just want to be very clear because I think you can survey people to death. So I want to be very clear that I am not asking for a survey. I am just saying I don't think that decision should come without the voice of at least the, the principals, the administrator, what have you heard? Hopefully, they know their buildings and what they've heard from their students or the advantage of having, the advantage or disadvantage of having uniforms in that school.
So we'll, we'll explore that a little more in, if, if it's determined, like if the principal brings up, we need to survey the community, we can do that. And then either I can bring an update and if they're like, yeah, we know based off of what our parents asked us to move away. So we can filter through that with those five schools. And then myself and Ms. Garcia, Lisa Stewart, and Ms. Salinas will work with Greg on some clarity around the language to address the things that were brought up around the, you know, it being left up to interpretation, to give some clarity around that. And then looking at the policies that Ms. Russell and myself found that has some specificity to it to help with that. So we'll bring that forward at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So look for that in upcoming meeting to continue that. So thank you for all the feedback. Again, Board, if you do have additional thoughts, questions, feedback, recommendations, please send those along to our leadership team.
I, I have one more question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Page.
Because I thought we said it at the last one. So what's the due date for this to go to print? Because whatever we do, it's got to be quick and fast. So we don't want...
Ms. Garcia Stewart and I talked right before this meeting. The due date for it to actually go to print, ideally, it would be May 11th. But we talked about a Plan B, which be, which would be that if it takes us to the end of the month, we talked through that scenario, that we can make sure, because all of our students have devices, our families do enrollment online, that we can have the electronic version available for the signature. And then whenever the printed portion was ready, we would have those ready to go. So it also would give us an opportunity to collect some data to see if we should be printing one for every family, because some families may prefer to have it electronically. So this year, we would do both, and then we can make a determination about it. The challenge with the printed copy, at any point, if the board changes a policy around anything that's in there, if someone is looking at that printed copy as out of date, we know that there's a live, living copy on the website. But just thinking through, how do we make sure that when people are accessing our website or wherever, that they're not relying on that hard copy? So we have a backup plan just in case we have to go past the ideal deadline so that we can make sure that we don't rush through it and then have to come back and correct stuff or that something was misunderstood. So I, I think we're good with that. The, the bigger issue is not necessarily the printing. We do need to allow time because it's a big book for the multiple languages to be trans, so it can be translated and ready to go once we make it live. So ideally, we would wrap this up by the end of May at the latest. Ms. Garcia Stewart, originally when we started, we thought by May 11th. So we have a little wiggle room there.
I, I do suppose one thing you could do, if, if it was critical to get the student code of conduct and the handbook printed, on the dress code piece, for example, you could just make reference to the dress code that's part of Board Policy. But if you did it that way, you would not have the details on the dress code in the handbook, and I don't think that's a very good idea. So that would be an option if there was a concern about that.
I was just wondering, what was the date?
Okay. Thank you. So we'll continue to work on that, and it looks, sounds like we've got a little bit of time to work through that, the details of that. So thank you, Board. Okay. We'll continue with our agenda. Next is Board Discussion Around Our Budget. So I would invite Ms. Kaiser, who was here with us, to come to the microphone and we can...
Did we skip policies?
No, that, that was there for the dress code policy specifically. There are some other, great question. Thank you, Ms. Page. There are some other policies that we're working through that we discussed at a previous meeting, Mr. Goheen and, and I will be discussing to bring that at a board meeting to bring some language and some, some conversation around that. We will discuss a little bit about the encumbrance policy that was discussed last time as part, that, that's as part of the budget conversation. But for the purposes of today's agenda, it was specifically around the dress code.
Well, you just put policies, so that threw me off. I thought he was going to bring something to us.
Not, not today. Thank you. All right. Ms. Kaiser, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Attached to the agenda, some information that was asked from the last special board meeting, some contingency reserve area balance information. The board also asked what amount it would be if we looked at having a contingency reserve balance of 10, 14, or 18 percent. That's on one attachment. And then the other one was the history of maintenance salaries that have been paid out of capital outlay. The last five years, they've ranged from 13.4 percent up to 21.27 percent. So that's some additional information. Also attached was the department budget update. And then back to our original ask of, you know, if we went to the $15 an hour, paying the welcome center through the ester funds, we'd have a remaining balance of new money of about 1.6 million.
And I will also add, what we will be seeking from the board today is just direction around, we did create a Google Drive that you all should have received a link to, and if you didn't, I'll make sure that you get it. With all of the documents of most of the questions that were shared from board members, all of those documents are in that Google Drive. We would be asking for direction from the board, number one. If we are moving forward with the $15 an hour, because then that, you know, will let us know how other budgets are impacted. And you don't have to decide today, but we need direction around that. If we are going to move, if the board is going to move towards creating a policy around contingency reserve at what level, and then we would need to have a plan to get to whatever that level is, if it's larger than what is there. And then based off what's required from the legislators of the needs assessments, we did provide all of those to the board. And I just want clarity, is the board wanting to spend time here at the, the budget meetings to start going through? Like, we can chunk them and say, we're going to do these five at this meeting and this one, to talk through like the things that are implied, you know, what staff are saying that they need in regards to improving the student, student achievement and outcome? I have not lived through this process with you all as a board, and I know that Ms. Russell is new too. So I'm just wanting clarity because then we can plan it out around that. We are in the process of meeting with all of our principals to go through their needs assessments. And I think we'll be finished with those by the end of May, mid-May?
By middle of May.
By the middle of May. And, and I can talk big picture about how we are addressing the things that we are seeing across all buildings or all levels of the systemic things that we're putting in place. When you look at the department budgets and also the school budgets, the school budgets did not increase this year unless they had an increase in, in enrollment. And the department budgets, we're not asking for an increase there, like making a recommendation because either we are looking and shifting and making things cost neutral. But if the board is wanting any of those things to be reduced, we just need direction and then we can come back with, here's our, that's why those lines are blank right now. I just need collectively from the board what direction you would want us to go. Because otherwise, we would just move forward with what was approved previously and make the necessary adjustments within that budget.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So I'd open up the floor to board members for feedback, questions. Again, you have access to a lot of the information that has been provided either electronically or via email or Google Drive. So hopefully, you've had a chance to, I know there was a ton. But would open up for questions or thoughts. And also, again, you heard Dr. Stubblefield ask for some feedback and guidance from the board in terms of how we want to approach this. So I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
I would like to see us definitely give the $15 minimum wage. Because we're competing, the three largest employers in our area are our sales, GM, and Ku. So we need to make sure, because when you look at all the openings that we have, we need to make sure that we're competitive. At least offer 15. McDonald's has given 15. So that's the least we can do to try to make sure that we can get people to come and work for us. And I think we offer some other benefits as well. On the assessments, I'd like to see us look at them and make sure so when we get to Topeka and they begin to question us, and that's some of the stuff that they hit us on, because some of the things we put down are too general. They need to be more specific about what they're doing and what they need to do so that we can make sure that's not something they can throw at us and criticize us for.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
This is Dr. Nguyen, and I'm looking at the emails. So where is the Google Drive, please?
The link, I will check with Don. It's in your M drive, but I will reshare, I'll copy it and share it now.
M drive? What is the M drive?
So every, and everyone who has a KCKPS email has an M drive, and it's like the same, I'm going to mess this up. It's the Google...
There isn't. I'm on the KCKPS email.
So you, you should have received, and, and Dr. Nguyen, and I can resend it to you, but it, it was an email, a link within an email that you got, that you received in your KCK email account that would have taken you to like a Gmail almost, but you have an, it's, it, that's what they're calling our M account. It's your, basically your KCK email at m.kckps.org. And it'll open up your, the Google Docs, the shared files, and that's where you'll find all the assessments. And we can have some...
No, no, I found the assessments. I thought this was a new email.
This, this is a new one. I'll send it now. Don, I think, shared it yesterday, but I will share it with the link to that one right now. The budget.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I didn't want to interrupt you, but what?
Oh, I, I was just, I'm doing, I'm typing your names and I'm going to hit send right now. I didn't say anything.
Well, I, I'll make the comment that, excuse me. Once again, the new legislation has asked, excuse me, the board to use the need assessments. And I like the idea of the schools chunked, as Dr. Stubblefield used. Again, I, I would like to know what process we would use to determine the time that it would take for the students to improve yet up to proficiency. That's what the law is asking us to do, and it has to be done publicly and documented. I've made no qualms about wanting to reduce the budget, therefore reducing the tax impact. And we know the assessments will go up. So if we do nothing, the taxes will increase. And so I've made no qualms that I will look, I have looked before, where we can make some cost cuts that do not impact students, do not impact salaries. But that's where I think the board should look closer at department budgets. Me and Dr. Stubblefield have those, have there been positions that you have phased out that would then take that amount out of that department? We need to know that. And of course, I support the 15 minimum wage. And so that's at first blush.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
So, oh, I'll wait and let everyone, because then I, I, well, can I ask a follow-up question, Cheryl?
Please.
So a couple of things, if, and so that's where we'll need direction as well. If the board collectively want to see options of what it means to reduce the budget without any, if the, if we're, if we're following Dr. Nguyen's recommendation without involving salaries and student impact, we can bring a scenario forth. I will share, and we can share in there what it means to, if we reduce it by one mil, two mil, and the, those kind of impacts. But if that's, we can definitely pull those scenarios together. If it is helpful, I will just say, if you reduce the budget by one mil, if you're trying to reduce the taxes, it's $1 million. And what that would mean locally, if you own a $50,000 home, it would reduce your taxes over the year of, it's like $5.80 or you can round up to $6. But we would also lose about $600,000 in federal money.
State aid, yeah, actually.
Local taxes.
Yeah. One, one mil is...
One mil in Kansas City, Kansas, one day county brings $600,000.
Yeah, and we would lose 415,000 in state aid. So one mil is actually about 1.3 million. And like Dr. Stubblefield said, one mil on a $50,000 home is 5.75 a year, $5.75 savings a year. So one mil on a $100,000 home would be $11.50 reduction in taxes a year.
You can craft it another way by saying, looking at a budget, if there are cost savings, it may not reduce the taxpayers' bill by 20 cents. But it's trying to look at a budget, knowing there is fat... But it's trying to look at a budget, knowing there is fat in it and that where you can trim it, where you can make some cost savings, where you can make some decisions that you're not, you know, just an example, replacing the windows. But of course, that's different. But the point I'm making, when you, a taxpayer doesn't by definition talk in mils. We know that. So that's one discussion, that's one scenario. Another scenario is suggesting, and I'll use the example, I've used it again. And it's, and it came to mind again with Ms. Russell talking, mentioning last evening, school vans. Well, if there's, if, since there is a reason, and I don't know what her explanation, but I'll say getting those students to those internships. How would one address that when you already have a fleet of 120 vehicles? Perhaps you look at where some of those vehicles can be replaced with student vans. So it's not just ruthlessly cutting, but it's systematically evaluating the budget for where you can impact student directly, cost savings, and just realistically looking at a budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. So, and I think that, you know, again, we have a fiduciary responsibility to oversee our budget for the district. And I think that makes, I mean, I don't think anyone is saying that we don't. And I think taking a look at where, you know, where are we investing our dollars? Absolutely. I would caution us on maybe moving too quickly on that and making cuts or reductions too quickly without really getting input and information from our staff in terms of where that may come from. I do think that's something that maybe, if that's something that the board wants to review and look at, you know, taking, taking time to be able to do that and having our finance committee really working with leadership team and staff to understand what that potentially would mean for different departments. And again, you know, I think our staff have a more intimate knowledge of where, of the budget and the line items and how, how that's being used and can really inform the board of where, where there's potential savings. So I would just caution us on trying to do that too quickly now. Potentially, maybe that's something that we want to look at for next year. Having the finance committee really do a deeper dive with staff and with input from staff so that we're, we as a board aren't just making suggestions where we, you know, and with the best intentions, but maybe have some unintended consequences if we're not truly informed. But I totally agree, I mean, it's our, part of our fiduciary responsibility to be doing that. But I would just say, I wouldn't want to do that from now to June without having proper discussions and input from staff.
Mr. Lopez, I would echo Dr. Nguyen's comments around chunking out the needs assessment. If for time's sake, that is not what we would like to do, I would like to maybe see, if we don't want to chunk it out, the other option that I would provide would be to somehow consolidate so you don't have to go through each and every needs assessment and try and piecemeal what each principal is saying they, or staff is saying that they need, but that that information is readily available in some type of graph. I have reviewed many of them, but I do think that conceptualizing what we can actually do would be easier if it was provided in a graph form. The other thing I will say, and I hear what you are saying, but I'm also looking at the data that the staff provided us. One of the areas of concern that I have, we are wanting to have all of our students by 2031 graduate 100% diploma plus. However, what we saw a couple of board meetings ago showed that we are seeing a huge decline in the number of students participating, graduating, and moving forward with the diploma plus accreditation, certification, whatever, whatever track they may have you. However, the budget for diploma plus program has increased over the years. But we don't have results for the increase. And I'm not saying that I am, I want to take from that department, but I am saying that those are the conversations that I do think we have to have is, which I also think when Dr. Nguyen sent an email asking what those, what current dollars have been spent out of budgets as well as the three-year scope, that that does fit into our realm of these budget conversations that we're headed into now. And I'm very interested in the department level looking at those budgets and figuring out areas to reduce some costs, especially if the impact for students isn't, and I won't say great in the best, in the negative way, but if we're not seeing the ROI for the dollars, I just don't see why we would continue to influx dollars in those departments for that purpose. But I also recognize it's been a pandemic, so I'm not taking away from that. But as we have these conversations, I think those are important things to think about.
And I just want to share the three-year forecast, the department budgets, and all of the other information is in that budget folder. I, so that's where I'm asking for clarity, like here, are you wanting to walk through all of that? Are you looking at that and then we are answering questions around that? And then I do think, to your point, Ms. Russell and Dr. Nguyen, around the return on investment, I will say that one of the things that we are working to put in place is a system where we can track the dollars to see if what we're doing is actually giving us that. We don't have any historical data around that, so that's, and then there were no clear outside of the assessments and there's not consistent data around, here's what we're looking at, here's our baseline, and here's where we're trying to go. So I'm not saying, I think there are definitely definite places where we can identify cost savings just, you know, in general, but really drilling down and saying, reduce this budget to put it over here. If we don't have a systematic way, something in place to measure the progress and/or to look at what objectives and outcomes that we're looking for, we'll be having the same conversation every year because we don't know if it's causation or correlation or all of those things. So we have to find a way to determine what variables we're actually looking at, what are the measures? Because when I, when we share our diploma plus data in comparison, like every, there are 38 school districts in this area who are part of the Kaufman Real World Learning project, and that basically is diploma plus. Like, students graduate either with dual credits, a licensure, a transition plan, a client-connected work project, an internship, and it's several things. Kansas City, Kansas is actually higher than every district, probably in the Kansas City and the greater Kansas City area because without intention, 48% of our students the last, not last year with the full year not being remote, those things didn't help. But last year and the year before that, we hovered right at a little less than 50%. And then when we include some of the things that Kaufman included, we are closer, we are above 60% of our students because we don't, we weren't counting like client-connected projects and certain things like that. So I think as a board and as a district, really identifying what are we looking at? What's the data that we'll be looking at outside of state assessments? We absolutely need to include state assessments, but all of our students don't take state assessments every year. So what are those data points that we're looking at for those students who are not taking the state assessments in order to ensure that? We also need to make sure we have enough opportunities for our students to obtain that because some of our diploma plus options are based off of having a certain GPA and you go into the tech when you are junior. We have to build in other opportunities, and that department has been working to do that. So some of those results you'll see like in another year or so. Because we have to make sure, from my perspective, what I've shared with the department, if we're talking about 100%, every student should have an opportunity. And right now, I can't say every student has an opportunity. We have lots of opportunity, but we don't have enough opportunities to ensure 100% of our students would be. And that's where the nine-to-10-year plan for that comes into play. I, I do think if the board, I think where there may be some consensus is to move forward with the $15 an hour. I think if the board is going to move forward with that, that is something that the board can do. I, to your point, Ms. Russell, I can pull out specifically the request from all of those needs assessments and put that in some sort of document. And really put it in more of a document where you can see, here's the school, here's the request, here's how we are addressing it. Because some of the stuff that it's on there, some of it is naturally taken care of. Like, if you're asking for an additional teacher because you've got more students, that's, it's a need, but that's a natural need that is taken care of based off student growth. If you're asking for a third PE teacher, then we're having a different conversation about, talk to me about what data you use to come to this and what are the outcomes? And is there an alternative? If you're talking about students need more movement, we're having more conversations around, can we partner with a community partner? Because we have so many unfilled positions to continue to create positions. We'll just continue to increase the number of openings. But I can definitely, and I don't, I don't, you know, if it's on the third, I don't know if I will have it. But at the next meeting, at least a week from now, I can definitely have every school what they're asking for and what our initial response to them will be, and then what data we'll be collecting. It's something that, as we bring on our new executive director of data, we'll be filling that in. Dr. Nguyen's question about how long will it take to get the students above a Level 2? It's very complex and nuanced, and it's very dependent upon individual students. So those conversations, we absolutely have to have principals and the people who know it. Because for me to generically look at and say, 20% of your students are at Level 2, they should all be at 3 by next year, not knowing those students. And that's something that we'll have to work when we look at our individual plans of studies for our students that we'll have to incorporate in that. And then we may be able to create a way to collect it to say, these two, these three, based off of all of their assessments, it will take them this. But we really have to look at individual student data because it's, it's more nuanced than just saying they're at 2, we'll get them to a 3. If there are 2, and attendance is an issue, we can do that. But if there are 3 grade levels behind, we really need to see what it, why they're behind and what research say, how typically, it, long it typically takes them to get to that. And so that's looking at individual students.
So are you saying that we can't move a pool of students? So we can't track a pool of students together based on things we've implemented?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying we.
I guess I'm trying to frame my.
Yeah, I, I.
Thought about that first, sorry.
No, I, I think I know what you're asking. So we can track a, so when we look at our FastBridge data, if there is a group of students who we know that phonics is their challenge, we could talk about that group. But if it's phonics, attendance, and behavior, that student, we don't, you know, we have to address all three of those. So what I'm saying is, we have to start at the individual level and then put those students in categories based off that. And we're not, like, we have the generic data of in third grade, 40% are, this is not actual data, so no one, please quote me on this, because it's taped, I'm just saying this. Hypothetically, if 40% of our first graders are high-risk or not meeting the standard, we know that 60% are. But of that 40%, we really have to look at what is it that may have caused them not to be at grade level? So we can track them as a group and say, in first grade, they weren't. But some of them, it may have been that they missed two weeks of school and next year they don't miss any days. So they're back on grade level. Some of them may be too, you know, they can't recognize their alphabet. It may take them three years, right? So I, we need to look at those larger groups and to break them into smaller groups to see what it is. Building teams, like grade-level teams, have a better idea of that, and they know that. But we don't have that data like system-wide in a way that we can come here to you and say, across our first graders, these are attendance or whatever. Like, we have it, but we just, we don't have a way to present it in order for the conversation to really be productive around if we really are talking about how do we move our students? Because we could say, okay, anybody, it'll take us two years. And that generically, if we're trying to make progress, I don't want us to just arbitrarily say a number. That will take some time, and that's what the MTSS teams and the building leadership teams, and we just have to put the systems in place so that you can, we can provide progress monitoring of those students. We can see like what standards they are, the standards that they know and understand and they're doing finals, the ones that they're on the bubble on. Like, there are systems out there like that. I've utilized those systems. We don't have those systems in place today in Kansas City, Kansas. But we will have them there, and if that conversation is going to be productive about how long will it take, we should be able to tell you how long it, I should be able to tell every parent, if your child does this, this, and this, this is when they'll get there, and we're not there yet.
Last question, the question, the data that Dr. Campbell showed a few board meetings ago that was specific to each individual school, is that data, the data that we could use as a, as a baseline? Or is that just data that doesn't really help the conversation we're having right now?
Well, it helps, it's the baseline of where our students are by grade level across the board. So that is good baseline data. But when, what the legislators are asking is specifically, okay, we know this is where they are, and we haven't, we have the cap assessment data from last year, they're in the midst of taking it. So all of that is good baseline data. But what I'm saying is, if we're going to say of our first graders, we're going to have to chuck them and say, this group of 20 is going to take six months. This group of 35 is going to take a year. This group, we can't just generically say of all our first graders, unless we go worst-case scenario and say, it's going to take us five years, when it may not take us five. Like, that's what I don't know, and that's what Dr. Nguyen is asking, and she's absolutely right. That's what the legislators are asking. And I don't think many school districts can tell you that today. So we have to create a system to be able to do that. So then we can say, in first grade, we have students, it's this spectrum of one to five years. I'm not saying it'll be five years, but then we'll be able to say that. But right now, we don't know that. We have the baseline data.
So I want to say thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, because you, you described the complexity of it. And for you to be honest and say, we don't have the system. As you say, you know, 286 school districts, today, they can't fulfill the legislative obligation, whatever the law says that the board is supposed to do. But we have to start.
Yes.
And that's then why it's a budgetary item, because to move that one little block of first graders, it's going to cost something. And that's why I'm saying the board's budget responsibility comes in. And then secondly, board's budget responsibility comes in. And then secondly, a third topic that we're going to have to address that we haven't mentioned is the at-risk spending. Because to move maybe that group of first graders is going to require, for example, the math virtual program. What is that going to cost? And, and that is what is time consuming, but super important for student success. So that's, that's the obligation we have. And, and Mr. Lopez, we don't have the luxury of saying, we'll put this off to next year. We don't have that luxury because these students' lives are on the line. So that task is, is a very daunting task, but that's our responsibility. But Dr. Stubblefield described the complexity and probably left out 50%. I don't know of, of what it will take.
But I, I do think, so what I can share is what I believe is accomplishable this year. I think we can. Myself and my team can pull the staff requests like by building and say, here, and put it in a more succinct fashion. And then if you want to dig deeper on those things, we can say, here's what they requested. Here's the school, here's what they requested. Here's how we plan to address it or the conversation that we have. And here's the data that we'll be using to see if this is impactful and share that with the board. And then the board has, we can look at that building by building in a more succinct fashion. And if there is a particular school that we want to have a deeper dive on, we can make sure that we either have the principal available to ask questions. That, I think, is doable. I think the other information that has been requested, it is out there. I just think the board will need to, just given our budget timeline, will need to come to some collective decision around what are, what are your goals that you're trying to? And I know it's a domino effect and it's not this simple. So if we know that contingency reserve is of interest, is that something that you want to have within this 22, 23 budget? Or is that something that we'll, with the finance committee, work towards and have it ready to go for the 23, 24 budget? If the goal is to reduce the mill levy or taxes or those kind of things, is that something you want to have options to explore around for 22, 23? Or is that 23, 24? Because, and I can't remember the other things, but realistically, the staff, we don't have the capacity to take on all of those things at this time without you all making this your full-time job and us making it our full-time job and not necessarily doing anything else. I'm just being realistic. So if we can prioritize, I, and I do think, you know, if there is, I'm not really sure. I need more information. The finance committee, we probably need to have regular monthly meetings starting in July or August, based off of what the board goals and priorities are. If the board is just saying, we need to see what the impact is, like option A, B. If we have direction around that, we can create that and talk about the impact and what it looks like to, however, if, if the overall reducing the budget or shifting dollars or whatever, if that is the will of the board, we can definitely bring forth options. But I, all of those things at once, and with this short window of when budgets are due, I, we can't honestly do it and do it with, in a way that will be thorough so that everyone has accurate information. And we just need time to vet out unintended consequences. Not that we'll always get to all of them, but I think we'll miss some key ones if we rush certain things. So we just would need direction around it. And, and if the board doesn't feel like they can decide whether we should reduce the budget, if we have time to build it out with the finance committee to say, here's what the budget looks like if you do nothing. I mean, if we continue with our, what we're doing now, here's what it looks like if we reduce it by one mill, and here's what it looks like if you reduce it by two or three mills. And then the board would have options and here are the, and here's what it means. And then as a board, you probably can have a more informed discussion around it. But I do think to Dr. Nguyen's point, most people don't speak in mills. I really don't speak in mills. I, you know, I do my best, but I rely heavily on like the finance people, but I can talk about it at a high level. But to see those different options, we could present high-level scenarios possibly, Tracy, if we reduced it within this. But if you want to flush it out, I do think you might want to take a little time. But if the board feels differently, we can operationalize anything that you give us direction to do.
Right.
Let me take a lead. I'm not suggesting we reduce the mill by two or three mills.
Okay.
That's, that's not realistic. But I'm, I'm asking us to look at departments based on your new structure or not.
Okay.
If there are excesses, that we then can seriously consider reducing that amount and perhaps shifting it over to, if you want diploma plus or you want whatever, but looking at the budget and expenditures.
Okay, we can do-
What is so hard about that?
No, we can absolutely do that. But there was the mention of lowering-
Reducing the tax burden, yes.
Yes.
But you wouldn't do it by two or three mills. I mean, let's be real. You're not going to, first, we're going to lose money because of reduction in, in students. Secondly, you're going to reduce funds from the, the tax credit. 400 to 600 students come from KCK. So we're going to, they're going to continue to recruit our students out of here. So, so, you know.
Dr. Nguyen, I was just giving an example of two to three mills. I was just asking, I didn't, I, if, if, I wasn't saying that you said that. I was saying, if the board wants options around the mill, we can definitely do that. But we can, we can provide information about, based off the restructure and how departments are using, what is the excess? And we, if the board wants to, if the mills are not something we won't, want to discuss this year, then that helps us to take that off the table. But we can definitely look at what the restructuring and the savings and those things were based off of that. And then what it looks like because we've lost students and budget-wise, the impact and where, where we have contingency, because we know we have a very transient population of students, and we have to be able to have the dollars and flexibility to add staff as that is happening. So we can definitely come back with, here was the cost savings based off of any restructures or no longer continuing with some contracts or some other efficiencies that may have been found.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Other?
I mean, I think, for me, I, I am not looking to naturally to go in and just say, we're, we're cutting the budget. I think there are some natural cost savings, as you just spoke to. And so as strong leadership, you're going to naturally find those things. And I think one of the things we don't talk about enough is where you have cost savings and where you already have saved dollars in the past. And I think credit also needs to be given there as well as we move forward. Because we, I know you have made some, some changes that have brought about efficiency. So for me, it's, I don't want to go in with the intention of, we're cutting dollars. I, I just think that the conversation needs to be of, how are we using our dollars? Are we using them in the most effective way? And then how do we do the right thing, of course, for our families and students? So that's, that's where I come from.
I would echo Yolanda's remarks. But I also think the conversation around lessening the tax, the, the barrier that we place on or the, sorry, I'm losing my words. I think we should look at that beginning in 2022, 2023, as you propose, to start to look at different options. I, I like what you have proposed with, this is if we keep it the same in 2022, 23, this is what it looks like if we lowered the mill by one mill, and this is what it looks like in 2020, by lowering it by two or three mills, I'm sorry. I will also say, I recognize this has also still been a transition year, and I'm hoping that we will continue to see even more savings in this next coming year so that the budget potentially will look different in 2022, 2020, or 23, 24, so that we can make some changes to lower some of that. So.
You know, I'm sorry, I think I'm going to have to go vote. But at the end of the day, my statement continues to be, no matter how much money we have, how do we impact the students? How do we spend it for their success? And so that is my goal, and it never has been hidden. So my comments, I'm, I'm concerned that they are characterized as slashing and just going in with a bulldozer. But I will not apologize for wanting us to spend our dollars most efficiently to help student success. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, before you go, do you all want to vote on the $15 an hour? Or are you wanting to hold off on that until?
I think we're in a position to vote.
If you have time, Dr. Nguyen, I just wanted-
May make a motion. I like to make a motion that we increase all, that we increase all staff to a minimum of $15 per hour, as recommended by, by the board previously.
Second, do we need to put a date on that?
That's where I stumbled, so I wasn't sure. Okay.
July 1st.
Can we make that?
Yep. July 1st for the next budget year.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make an amendment to that motion that, Ms. Smith, here I go. I make a motion that we increase all staff to a minimum of $15 as of July 1st.
Really, I have a minute or a second. Sorry.
Thank you. So there's been a motion and a second, or amended motion and second. Any further questions or discussion? Great. Seeing and hearing none, I would ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Jenny Humphries?
Jenny Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes. Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Great. Motion passes. Thank you. So before we take a quick recess, again, just to give guidance to, and thank you, board, for the conversation and for your actions today. As we continue with the board, with the budget process, Dr. Stubblefield, I think there's some consensus around what you've provided in terms of that next steps and what information you can bring back to the board at the, I'm not sure if it'll, if that'll be at the May 3 meeting, potentially not, it looks like. But maybe, there may be some time at the May 10 meeting or the May 13 meeting where we can get that information prior to the meeting to digest a little bit on it and then have conversation and continue that.
So I will say for the May 3 meeting, no. Primarily, if you don't need that entire time, we just will need the HR report approved. So that just may be a short one and if we're going to say. And then because on the May 10 meeting, board members, we were planning to have a, a report from nutritional services, but the director is no longer there and then Ms. Miller has been out. So we would, we were pushing that back. So because we won't have tho, that report or the camera update from the union and the district, we can actually use time during the regular board meeting on March 10, I mean, May 10, for budget so that we can just, I can have what I talked about. We can have it at the May 10 meeting and we can get it to you either that Wednesday or Thursday before the meeting, if not before that. And so May 3 would probably be to approve the HR report and if there is, oh, and there's an early childhood report that needs to be. So it could, it'll be like very short. People can zoom, and it will be in Zoom.
Great. I would just caution or just ask board members to continue to hold that time if you already have it on your calendar, just in case we're ready to present any policy discussions at that time. They, that may be a good time to have that, those conversations. So I believe Ms. Smith has sent that on your calendar. So please continue to hold that for that May 3 meeting.
Mr. Lopez, before you take your break, could I ask two questions? Well, make, make a statement and ask a question?
Absolutely. Dr. Nguyen, please.
Dr. Stubblefield, combined with the, the comment, at 2:30, we go back into conference committee on the budget, K-12 budget. And one of the things that is near agreement is adding to the safe and secure grants. They allow improvements for like security cameras and lighting. We, does USD 500 have any plans on applying for those grants? I think they're matching, however.
Yeah. I think if it's cameras and lightings, we would, lighting, we would definitely apply if they reinstate those because those are two areas that I think we are constantly looking at to make more improvements in.
So have you, have you looked at that yet?
Is it different from what I honestly haven't looked at it recently? Is it different from what it was previously?
No, not different. But, you know, money goes fast. But again, if it's, if it's matching funds, then we have to budget for it.
Right.
Okay. And then the second point, we do go into conference on the K-12 budget at 2:30. It will not be settled today. And there was an extra 30 million for special ed on the table. And now I don't think it's on the table anymore.
I don't think it is.
So it's real, it's real loose. That's just a report.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Thanks for your time today. Appreciate what you're doing down at PICA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got to go.
All right.
However, I'll, I'll be back if we don't take too long.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Which means it's not, if I come back, it's not good news. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, board. Let's take a quick 10-minute recess so that we can set up for the next part of our board discussion. So let's come back at 2:35.
And staff, you don't have to stay on for this portion unless you're just interested in the board evaluation. You're free to go. But you're welcome to stay as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. Thanks for giving us a few minutes to set up. Sorry, we took a a few extra minutes to get set and situated. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Um again, good afternoon. And um today, um we get the treat of having Dr. Marsha Weisman back with us. It's been a while since we've seen you, Dr. Weisman, but you are a friend of our districts and a friend of this board, and we've done some great work with you, so we're honored to have you back with us to continue some of our board evaluation and board um development work. So we're gonna jump right in. Um, board, again, thank you for your time today and um I would, this is part of our um responsibility and role as a board, is to do a self-evaluation and to engage in that process. So I'm definitely looking forward to the conversation this afternoon. So again, and this isn't the only date. Again, we do have a couple of other dates that we're looking for to do this work. So um without any further ado, um Dr. Weisman, I'll just pass it along to you. Board, I will say for those that are online, um we will have um some some prompts. You should be getting an email um with an an additional link that and I'll give instructions at the appropriate time um for you. But um again, Dr. Weisman, thank you for being here and the floor is yours.
So I am so, so, so happy to be here with you. Again, I've really missed you all. Um, I always talk to people about what a passionate group of people you are um in terms of your work with your students. And so I'm and it's especially exciting to have some of you here in person. Um, Ms. Russell, I haven't had a chance to meet you yet, but I look forward to uh having that opportunity to meet you in person at some point. Um, I'm calling this kind of uh dip your toe in the water evaluation a little bit. It's about beginning the process um of thinking through these areas. So we'll talk about some things related to board functioning. Um, and then I am literally going to have you process in partners as um Mr. Lopez was just saying uh with in groups of two. And if Dr. Nguyen is able to come back, we'll have her join with the two online and have a group of three. Um, and then I will follow up by sending you a link to do the formal board evaluation. And if there's anyone who would prefer to do a paper pencil copy, we can do that and then we'll enter it. And then at a future meeting, um we'll all have all of that compiled and then that gives us a basis to do some goal setting um in terms of areas that you wanna focus on as you go forward. Um, now, you know that uh I always like to have you do um a little bit of connection and I'm not going to take a lot of time um to do that today because our time's very limited. But um I want to just briefly, if I can, have each of you just tell tell the group now as we begin this work, how are you today? Ms. Drew?
Maxine Drew, I'm feeling great, very energetic and ready to do what I have to do in order to be the best that I can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Yolanda Clark, I am doing um I'm doing well. Uh have had a busy, busy play, but excited about the things that I've been able to accomplish and keep checking off.
Okay, sense of accomplishment. And uh Mr. Lopez?
Hi, Randy Lopez, and I'm just um I'm excited to be here um with everyone and to have this conversation enthusiastic about the work that we that we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
Wanda Page, all good.
Okay, thank you. Um, so let's see, uh Ms. Humphries?
Nice to see you again, Marsha.
Nice to see you.
I am doing just wonderful. I'm glad to be back out doing school board work and working with all my colleagues.
Okay, and Ms. Russell?
Rachel Russell, and I am feeling um intrigued.
Okay. Um, and uh Dr. Stubblefield, how are you today?
I am good.
Simplicity. And uh Mr. Cohen, if you thought I was gonna let you off the hook, you forgot me.
I'm doing perfectly fine, wonderful.
Okay, and then, okay, uh is Leslie here?
She's online.
Is she?
You're muted.
Hello, hello.
Hi there.
How are you?
I'm well, so how are you today?
I'm doing good. Thank you for asking.
Okay, so I we've kind of all come together, so um can you all see the PowerPoint now? Now, okay. All right, so this I I'm calling this today's targets. Um, we're we're gonna do just a little bit more about effective teams. It should feel um for those of you that were on the board previously, it should feel a little bit like review. We're just gonna kind of revisit some topics. Then we're gonna do this uh dip your toe in the water thing that I was talking about. Um, then I want to talk about a few more aspects of working together as a team.
All right, welcome back. Thanks for giving us a few minutes to set up. Sorry, we took a few extra minutes to get set and situated. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Again, good afternoon. And today, we get the treat of having Dr. Marcia Wiessmann back with us. It's been awhile since we've seen you, Dr. Wiessmann, but you are a friend of our districts and a friend of this board. And we've done some great work with you, so we're honored to have you back with us to continue some of our board evaluation and board development work. So, we're gonna jump right in. Board, again, thank you for your time today. And I would, this is part of our responsibility and role as a board, is to do a self-evaluation and to engage in that process. So, definitely looking forward to the conversation this afternoon. So again, and this isn't the only date. Again, we do have a couple of other dates that we're looking for to do this work. So, without any further ado, Dr. Wiessmann, I'll just pass it along to you. Board, I will say, for those that are online, we will have some prompts. You should be getting an email with an additional link and I'll give instructions at the appropriate time for you. But again, Dr. Wiessmann, thank you for being here, and the floor is yours.
So, I am so, so, so happy to be here with you. Again, I've really missed you all. I always talk to people about what a passionate group of people you are in terms of your work with your students. And so, I'm, and it's especially exciting to have some of you here in person. Ms. Russell, I haven't had a chance to meet you yet, but I look forward to having that opportunity to meet you in person at some point. I'm calling this kind of dip-your-toe-in-the-water evaluation a little bit. It's about beginning the process of thinking through these areas. So, we'll talk about some things related to board functioning. And then, I am literally going to have you process in partners, as Mr. Lopez was just saying, within groups of two. And if Dr. Wen is able to come back, we'll have her join with the two online and have a group of three. And then, I will follow up by sending you a link to do the formal board evaluation. And if there's anyone who would prefer to do a paper pencil copy, we can do that, and then we'll enter it. And then, at a future meeting, we'll all have all of that compiled, and then that gives us a basis to do some goal-setting in terms of areas that you want to focus on as you go forward. Now, you know that I always like to have you do a little bit of connection, and I'm not going to take a lot of time to do that today because our time's very limited. But I want to just briefly, if I can, have each of you just tell the group now as we begin this work, how are you today? Ms. Drew.
Maxine Drew. I'm feeling great, very energetic and ready to do what I have to do in order to be the best that I can be.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Yolanda Clark. I am doing, I'm doing well. Have had a busy, busy play, but excited about the things that I've been able to accomplish and keep checking off.
Okay, sense of accomplishment. And Mr. Lopez.
Hi, Randy Lopez, and I'm just, I'm excited to be here with everyone and to have this conversation enthusiastic about the work that we, that we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page.
Yolanda Page, all good.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see, Ms. Humphries.
Nice to see you again, Marcia.
Nice to see you.
I am doing just wonderful. I'm glad to be back out doing school board work and working with all my colleagues.
Okay, and Ms. Russell.
Rachel Russell, and I am feeling intrigued.
Okay. And Dr. Stebbelfield, how are you today?
I am good.
Simplicity. And Mr. Cohen, if you thought I was gonna let you off the hook, you forgot me.
I'm doing perfectly fine, wonderful.
Okay. And then, okay, is Leslie here?
She's online.
Is she?
You're muted.
Hello, hello.
Hi there.
How are you?
I'm well, so how are you today?
I'm doing good, thank you for asking.
Okay. So, I, we've kind of all come together, so can you all see the PowerPoint now? Now, okay. All right, so this, I am calling this today's targets. We're gonna do just a little bit more about effective teams. It should feel, for those of you that were on the board previously, it should feel a little bit like review. We're just gonna kind of revisit some topics. Then, we're gonna do this dip-your-toe-in-the-water thing that I was talking about. Then, I want to talk about a few more aspects of working together as a team, and then specifically kind of drill down a little bit on the importance of coherence as a group and how that benefits students. So, just as a way to participate here as we kind of get started, here's, here's a few teams that maybe you've heard of. And I wonder if anybody would like to share an attribute of one of those teams that you think helps to make them effective? And if you remember, I value wait time. I have no problem with just sitting with a little bit of silence for a few minutes while you think.
Common goals.
Common goals, okay. So, do you find that as an attribute that you see as common to all of these teams?
Yeah, I think, I do believe that, you know, they have similar goals in mind. They've had time to share what those goals are and how to get there. So, I do think that's important. And sometimes, people come in and, you know, different teammates come in with maybe different expectations or a few, a little bit different goals, but then finding that common ground where, hey, we do agree on these things, and here's, here's how we're gonna get there.
Okay.
I would like to say, I see them as making respectful decisions together, agreeing that they may not agree, but yet and still, they make the decision and they move forward in a very positive way.
So, and we definitely saw some of that on TV with the Chiefs, you know, when they would share that they had disagreed, but how they came back together.
And move forward, yes.
Other thoughts?
I'll add in, respectful of differences. I think about Ms. Piggy and Kermit. They were respectful of each other. And that's what made them a great team because they, they did know that they were not alike. However, they relied upon each other's strengths and talked about opportunities.
Okay.
Very good.
Ms. Humphries, Ms. Russell, any thoughts? I don't want you to feel left out.
I don't feel left out. I agree with what all of them said. With an orchestra, you have to, you have to keep your eye on your music and on your director, your conductor. If you don't, then you get lost.
Okay, so that, that becomes a good metaphor for the importance of leadership and making sure that there's a common goal through the music. The music defines the direction of your common goals, and then you have a leader to help direct that. I'm gonna ask a question, and Ms. Russell, feel free to jump in. I don't mean to cut you off, but what I want to prompt is, we may not know on all of these, but I'm wondering, certainly with Apollo 13 and with the Chiefs, we can know, and I, how do we value overcoming challenges or difficulties in terms of working together as a team?
I need some clarification. Are you saying personal, personally, how do we value? Are you saying as a board?
So, well, in either case, either like your personal opinion or what you think collectively, your board believes. But, and I may have led that too much, but do you see that having some challenges can become an attribute for a team in terms of your work going forward? Is probably how I should have framed that.
Well, I'll start us out. I, I think that it can if people are receptive to that. So, you, you have to be able to self-reflect and know yourself. But then also, again, it goes back to that respect of who you are, who others are that work with you, and what that looks like for going forward. If we just keep having differences and no one ever talks about them, acknowledges them, respects each other, then you, I mean, you're crabs in a bucket.
Okay. Other thoughts related to that?
Most importantly, have to make sure that you keep your eye on the goal as to what your objective is. And even though at times, you can't come to a generous conclusion, but you work collectively together.
Okay. So, I think as we move forward from this, that idea is really understanding that when we do work together towards that common goal, we can gain a lot from the challenges that we face. And certainly, I think probably each of us in our personal lives can think about how we've grown and become stronger and better because of challenges. And if you like reflect back on your life, you think, well, if I had never had that challenge, I would have never known this or that, or how, how I could go forward. So, I think one of the things that I'm really hoping that, and you're hearing me say stuff you've heard me say before, I know, but that, that we don't think of differences of opinion or conflict as a bad thing. Those technology people, I just spilled water. But as another opportunity for how we can continue to learn and, and gain from that process. So, as we go forward, this again is probably, I didn't have a place I could dance, so I thought I'd throw the water to get it all interesting. Thank you. In the superintendent's job description, have a towel ready. So, as we look about, look at becoming a team, and you've probably heard this before, the four stages of becoming a team, the forming, the storming, the norming, and the performing. And I think one of the things that sometimes as school boards becomes a challenge is anytime you add a new board member, you really kind of have to return to forming again because you're not exactly the same team. It's also true when you get a new superintendent because the, the leadership changes as well. So, when we think about, when we're in that forming process, you know, it's exciting, you know? We're looking forward to what might happen, and you just want an election to be on the board, you know? That feels pretty good. And people generally kind of go in with this idea that we want, we want to work in harmony with each other, you know? And it's, we maybe have rose-colored glasses on for a little while. But, you know, that's followed by the storming stage. And so, you know, we might be competing a little bit for those informal roles that we assume when we're part of a team, or who's gonna have power, whose, whose ideas will have the most influence. And that's when conflict may emerge more because we're learning about each other and we're learning how we work together. But then we move into the norming. And so, you know, as, as we're moving forward, we're able to be more comfortable with expressing our differences. And we really are able then to have kind of ground rules that we find are effective and help us to work. So, like in the norms that you've developed in the past, one of the reasons we say you need to return to that is the norms that you need may vary, you know, as you become a new team again each time. And, and then the goals emerge as you're doing the work of your team, whatever it may be, as data comes in, as information comes in, you know? And then, the performing part is where, this is when things are getting done. I mean, this is when you start to have that accomplishment and you're moving forward, and you really do feel a part of this team. So, I acknowledge that we're moving through this quickly, kind of oversimplifying some of these concepts. But I think especially with boards of education, it's helpful to remember again that we, we kind of have to move through these phases each time we have any kind of change in who we are. So, what we're going to focus on primarily now are these six core areas of board performance. And these are the areas that are part of our KSC evaluation. And so, the, the categories are, as an individual board member, the things that you do, the conduct and the way that the meetings are, are held, your policy development role, the vision and goal setting. So, as you remember, as we've talked about the governance clock and the fire tower, I really resisted. I know, Ms. Humphries, you're probably disappointed. I didn't put a fire, a fire tower in the PowerPoint. But those are the kinds of things, because when you're up in the top of the fire tower, you have the view that helps you be better able to figure out what kind of vision you should have. Then, your budget role that you were just talking about today. And a well-developed budget means that I could come in and see your budget, and I would have some sense of what your goals are and what you value and what matters to the Board of Education at Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, by looking at how you have allocated your resources and your, your budget in, in an ideal world. And then, the relationship with the superintendent, which I still think that's always your most important role, is the selection of, and then the ongoing evaluation and support of, of your leader. So, this is what we will get into. So, I'm going to pop up these five areas here that come under that individual board member actions. And so, what I'd like for you to do with your partners, and Mr. Lopez will give you directions here in a second, is for each of these five things, with your partner, talk about, do you think, I'm gonna jump to number four as an example. Do you think, as a board, we preserve the confidentiality of items discussed in executive session? And if you think as a board, you do a really good job with that in your team, you may say, hey, this, this is a strength we can identify that we have. If you think maybe that's an area that, oh, maybe we've had some lapses, we haven't done so well, you may say, this is an area for growth. We, we need to emphasize that and make sure that all board members understand the importance of this. But you'll do that for each of those five items while we're working in our teams. Then, we'll come back together. And so, in your three groups then, we'll act, ask each of you to share, what did you see as a strength in this category? And what did you see as an area of growth in this category? We'll share those, and then we'll break out again to go to the next category.
Great, thank you. So, for Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell online, you should have received, not the email I sent, but a different email. I believe it may have come from John, from IT, with a link. So, fortunately, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to hop back and forth from that, that Zoom to back to this Zoom, and I'll, I'll text you all when our time is up. So, Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell, if you wouldn't mind looking for that link, that Zoom link that you should have gotten an email, received an email for a different Zoom link, go through these questions. And maybe, Mr. Hoda, if you have this presentation, can you email it to Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell so that they have the questions? Or, or if we can leave, I guess maybe, no, they won't be able to join the Zoom.
I took a picture of it.
Oh, you took a picture, okay, never mind. Ms. Humphries is smarter than I am, so she took a picture of it. So, you'll have, Ms. Humphries, Ms. Russell, if you could, you'll hop into the other Zoom. I'll text you when we're ready to come back, and then you'll come back to this Zoom webinar.
Okay, so, we need to leave you and go hop on the other one, okay?
Yes.
I'll see you in a minute, Rachel.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so, I think, Mr. Lopez, are you going to come join?
Yes. Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and bring folks back. Hopefully Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell will be joining us in just a minute, so we'll keep an eye out for them as they rejoin the Zoom.
Okay, so I waited till you had that first conversation to tell you about one more element that will be in your written one when you do it. And in addition to ranking these things in terms of whether you think they're strengths or areas for growth, you'll also rank them on how important you think they are. So there may be some aspects within this one, and I'm going to just jump in and guess that your board attorney would think number four should rank pretty high in terms of violating executive session. But it's going to, you know, you're going to each bring your perspective into, well, I think this isn't something we do very well, but I also don't think it matters. Okay? So you have essentially that opportunity within the document, and so then when we share the results with you, you'll see areas of strength and areas for growth, but you'll also see how important it is to you as a board as a whole in terms of if it matters. So your goal setting, if something is not important and it's an area of growth, that may not be something that you choose to do a goal around. So I wanted to add that after you've now had an opportunity to kind of walk through these. So do you mind, Ms. Drew, Ms. Clark, sharing, what did you see in this category that you thought was a strength for the board?
We marked number one and number two as a strength for this board, just with the hat of, number one, we all want to do what's right by everyone, so I think that is definitely one of our strengths. We do value our community, and we want to hear from them.
Okay, area of strength, Ms. Page, Mr. Lopez, or areas, or area?
So we had a good conversation over here. I'll just say that I think we both agreed that all of these are areas for growth, and part of it is something you mentioned, Dr. Weisman, around the political nature of our role, and it's hard to sometimes separate that because we have constituents that we're responsible to, that voted us in, that could vote us out, right? And so that was part of the conversation. But one that we identified as a strength was number two, where we both agree that that is a strength.
Okay, Ms. Humphries, Ms. Russell, what was it? What did you think was a strength, or more than one?
Well, I, Rachel felt that we were pretty strong on number one, but like Randy and Wanda, I think we can grow in all of it. All of it can be areas of growth, because as you mentioned, we are a new team together. We have a new superintendent and a new school board member, and it takes time to orientate to a new group.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to now circle back around in the same order and see what you thought was your primary area of growth. I won't come back to the other groups because you mentioned you saw all of them, but I wanted to ask you, what did you see as an area of growth within this one?
So we marked number three, four, and five. I do want to clarify, we haven't mastered all five of these by far, but we did deem, so we marked number three, four, and five as definitely areas of growth. Those are eye glaring, they stick out for us.
Okay, okay, so we're going to move into the next category now, and so this is really how your meetings function. So once again, I keep picking on Mr. Goheen because he's sitting right there and it makes it easy for me, but he probably thinks that this is an area that when you're ranking importance, you might want to make sure, and I can see it in what you're doing and the way the Zoom is set up, and everything shows that you are following the guidelines that have been given in terms of making sure that your meeting is open so that the public can observe you doing the business of the district. So once again, we emphasize they're not public meetings in that the public is not a participant during the meeting, but they're public in that your public has the right to watch you do the business of the district. Okay? The next one is the agenda development, and that the way this is written is kind of like a minimum baseline of how that should be, that the board president and the superintendent. Now, that doesn't mean that that's the only way an agenda can be developed in many districts, and I believe we talked about this at one time, when you do agenda development, you could have the board president, the vice president, and a rotating member that changes each time you do agenda development with the superintendent. So you can find the method that best meets your needs. The goal is, obviously, to make sure all board members feel that in agenda development, as well as the actual meeting, that all voices are heard or there's opportunity for that. So then, before each meeting, making sure that you've received your agenda, and then where it's appropriate, so it depends on the agenda item, but from the administration, you've had analysis, just as you discussed in your budget meeting. It would be, if this, then that, might be analysis of different budget information that would be sent, and then a recommendation from your superintendent on the direction that the board could vote based on the analysis that's been given. Now realize, sometimes for some agenda items, those things are not applicable. That you've done your homework when you come to the meeting, you've read your materials, that everybody does understand the process for how some things put on the agenda. So number five ties very closely to number two, depending on the process that's been developed. And I know that we talked about this when we met before, and this can vary depending on the agenda item, but certainly for most policy adoption, that you want a period of at least two meetings so that there's opportunity to have information presented, that questions can be identified, and responses can be provided. Sometimes it means perhaps another piece of data or something might need to be collected. It does not always mean that these meetings are adjacent to each other. You know, there could be a longer period of time between them, but what it means is, in order to be intentional and deliberate and looking at input and data that for most decisions, certainly related to policy, that you're doing that over at least a two-meeting period, and that helps to avoid surprises as well. So I think we're ready to go back into our partners here to discuss again areas of strength and areas of growth. So, and I'm going to ask each group this time, so even if, and it may or may not be true that all areas are, could be an area for growth, this time identify the one that you think might need the most growth, if you had to choose one.
So we're going to mark each one of them, but then we also choose, like our top?
Right.
Okay. Got it.
All right, I think we are getting close to coming back. I can't see, I just, I know Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell, I had to let them know, so hopefully they're joining. I don't know if they're back yet, but we'll go ahead and get started.
Okay, so I'm getting to see if they're back, because I'm going to start with them if they are. So Ms. Humphries, Ms. Russell, are you with us?
I heard you say, are you with us?
Okay.
Were you talking to us?
Okay, so my, I was checking to see if you were back yet, because I'd like to start with you and have you share with us both what you saw as an area of strength and an area of growth within this. Just, just one example of each if you want, unless you had a lot of discussion on others, feel free to share more.
So we, I will start with areas of growth. We identified three and five as an opportunity for growth, feeling as though we have made some adjustments for understanding the procedure for board members to place items on the agenda, but don't know that we are actively using that procedure. It may be something on the end of our board meetings, but there has been no actual, actual items or actual enforcement of what that procedure looks like.
Okay.
And then the rest of them, we felt pretty good about. As far as the agenda, we just talked, I guess for the other area for growth was the agenda piece, we get the information, it still continues to be updated up to the meeting date, and so just felt like maybe that's still a place we could work on that. For me personally, it may be a learning curve, but overall, it may be something that us as a unit, we can identify a better process or how to make sure everyone feels like they have the information they need.
Okay. What about strength then?
One, two, four, and six, we felt like were strengths and that we do pretty consistently and pretty well.
Okay, thank you. So going backwards, Mr. Lopez, Ms. Page.
I'll let Ms. Page respond to this one. You might want to, make sure you're using your mic so they can hear you online.
We felt that we did number one well. We do try to comply with the Kansas Open Meeting Act. We also felt that people do come prepared, and we felt that was a strength, but we felt two, three, five, and six, there's room for improvement, there's too much on the agenda. Some are critical items, that some, I'm just speaking for me, I think some stuff, when you deal with budget, I think it ought to be budget. You don't do that when we're meeting to 10 o'clock at night to make sure everybody's fresh and open. I think we put too much stuff on the agenda. There's a better way to do it. I think we're smart enough to do it, we're just not doing it.
Okay, all right. Then Ms. Drew and Ms. Clark.
All right, so we marked number one, two, and three as strengths for our board. I would say especially even over the last year, we definitely have grown in those spaces. And then number four, five, and six, we marked those as areas of growth. And then number four, five, and six, we marked those as areas of growth. Number four, we talked about like being prepared, making sure you're reading the information that you read. And there's a lot of back and forth emails that come sometimes, but I think it's, as board members, sometimes I think we come out of the high tower, and because of that, we spend more time reading and going back and forth than we probably should to be able to make the decisions that we are responsible for as a board. So definitely number six, I want to call out, we definitely have seen some areas of improvement there, even with Dr. Stubblefield, and she's taught us how to do that a lot better. So definitely, it's still an area of growth, but definitely we're doing better in that space also.
Okay. So I do think that when we compile your written results, I suspect that this area will come out again because we had been having some conversation about this when I worked with you before. So when we do some goal setting, this may be an area we really want to emphasize and maybe even do a just really focused time to talk about what the process could look like. Because as you talk about length of meetings, these things are not just correlations, but there's also causation in terms of how agendas developed and all of this process also influences. Not, not one-to-one exact causation, but, but generally speaking, the better this process, the tighter the meetings will be. Dr. Stubblefield, did you want to add anything since this is obviously a big issue, I think?
Yeah. The only thing I would add is that the agendas, setting the agendas and having them material, I don't disagree that that is an area that we still, we can grow in. I think as you just spoke, Marsha, one thing that will help staff be more prepared and make sure that we have the information to you. If we have, if there was some prioritizing based on the board and goal setting, so then when we, because we may have something down and I have staff, well, this year I've had staff say, "We're going to do an update on this." But that may not, we, I didn't know like what are the board's priorities necessarily, and then we would have requests, and then the agenda would grow.
Right.
And so one thing that I've talked to staff about, about is, you know, when we get to the end of this calendar year, we're going to do a look back, and we'll go look, and we'll balance, and we can do those things. But as situations come up, like when we, the CDC changed the masking guidelines, that wasn't our plan to be on the agenda, but there were other timely things that if we didn't do it then, it would have cost them. So balancing it out and allowing space for those things that don't, we don't necessarily have control over. I think if we have a process around, okay, we can't give this report tonight, but we have pushed off the academic report for so long, so it wasn't like we can push it off anymore. So just trying to allow space in every meeting for those last-minute urgent things that may come up that would require board discussion.
So I do think the pandemic has put pressure on all school boards in terms of taking away some of their control to determine priorities. There often you were at the mercy of circumstances that you could not control. So I think once again, though, that supports the idea of really working on the system because if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And so I think it really is important to kind of go through that process. And I, I think then really going back to the matrix, you know, of urgent and important, and, and as a board deciding, you know, do we have some less important, not urgent things that are making it onto the agenda, you know, and, and kind of analyzing some of those things. So I think those are some things we can do to try to help tighten up both the agenda setting and the focus of the meetings too. So we'll get that final report, but I think it sounds like there'll probably be some good support for making that an area for goal setting. Anyone want to make any more comments before I move to the next category? So in the area of policy development, you know, essentially that is how you govern is, is through policy. And as you identify the vision, it's the policy that you develop is what reflects the vision. An example that I sometimes give is if you have policy that includes a lot of zero tolerance, that tells me something about what your vision is. That may not match what you're saying is your vision. So that means we're not just talking about initial policy development, but we're talking about the importance of ongoing policy review so that you're not inadvertently retaining policies that no longer reflect what you value and, and where you want to go as you're looking forward. So that is something that once again needs to be systematic and follows on the tail of what we were just talking about. By tightening those things up, that really helps your staff when they know, oh, you know, we planned in July that in April, we would be looking at our policies related to. Then they will have known when they should provide information to you related to those topics instead of two weeks before you want it. And sometimes the information you need may, to really drill down and do it adequately, may take a lot more time. So, so being able to do some longer-term planning, so that's what I just said. Then once again, making sure, so we talked about a public meeting, so even though the public does not participate in your meeting, it's outside of the meeting, you have means by which you're getting input from your community, your staff, et cetera. And then remember, as you determine the what, your administrative staff, your superintendent has her staff then develop the how. And so the policy needs to be written in a way that they can figure out how it can be implemented. And then I'm not going to pick on Mr. Goheen, but this is where he sometimes can provide assistance in terms of when, when laws change, how to make sure that your policies are in compliance with new legislation, for example. You also have an insider here to help keep you on top of things. So we'll break up into your partners now and let you go through this in the same way, areas of strength or areas for growth.
All right. We're going to come back together. I believe Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell are back with us. Try to give you a little more time this time. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So I will say before I have you report out that certainly at KSB, we can help you with parts of this. We do review policy and send, you know, have a process for you to review policy and send that out. So you're not on your own doing this at all. So that is one of the ways that, that we support you. But you have to then take what we've given you and, and take the next step. So it's still very important to rank these, and I didn't want to throw that out till you had processed for just, just a minute about that. So let's have you two start first. You've been the middle child until now.
Sure. Thank you. So Ms. Page and I both thought that number one was a strength, that the board really does understand how we are guided and guide through policy. But we felt the other four on the list were all areas for growth. And we thought that if we were prioritizing, the number two would probably be the one that we would really look at. If we had a good process to review and keep current, then that would help guide the other ones in, in our brief conversation. So all, all two through five areas for growth, prioritizing number two.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Humphries, Ms. Russell?
Well, we came up with one as an area of growth because sometimes we jump down out of that watchtower and get down into the weeds, and that's something that is one of those growing pains. You have to learn to pull yourself back a little bit sometimes, and remember, you're supposed to be setting policy and having the superintendent implement what the board desires. So it's, it's room for growth. Number two, it's room for growth because sometimes it's hard for other people who are not always in the board library and to the policies, knowing where to find things. So one, one example that Rachel brought up is the mask policy. As a new board member, it was hard for her to find out where it was written. So just, it's one of those things that if you're there all the time, you know where to find it, but if you're not, you can't. And then number three, we thought was a strength, but as a new board, because of new board member, new superintendent, really, we can grow in all five areas.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Drew, Ms. Clark?
All right. So I'll, I'll get it started, and then I'll pass it over to Ms. Drew. So we found number one to be an area of growth. Number two to be a strength for, for ours, and I use strength lightly because maybe we need a better process, but Mr. Goheen keeps us in line, and so I appreciate that. Number three as an area of growth for us as well. Number four, Ms. Drew said we have a split there, and I agree with her, so.
In number four, the first part, whereas assure that each policy is written, that is our strength. But I feel as though support the superintendent in the reasonable interpretation, that is where we need more growth.
Well, I marked it as an area of growth since we couldn't take the whole statement.
Okay.
And then number four, I mean, number five, we marked that as, as a strength, the kind of, kind of the same statement for number two coincides with five.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So moving into the, the next category, and this is the vision and goal setting. So we, we talked about how, you know, through policy that the vision is seen, but just really recognizing that it's important that you set this clear direction. And so as, as we talked about, you know, policy is, is how you make this happen, and we talk about, you know, your most important job of, of, you know, selecting your leaders, all of that flows from this. Like you select your leader based on where you see your district destination, the vision that you have for your district. Your policy is developed based on where you want to see your district. Once again, you're going to see the correlation between this and what we just talked about with policy in terms of getting input from your community and your staff. Then, you know, the hard part, easy for me to say, nice short sentence here, but the hard part is, you know, agreeing on what that vision will be. And then where you're working with your superintendent and the administrative staff then, so based on you've defined the vision and you have, this really goes back to what you were talking about before we did this session, where you were talking about identifying how much time it will take to move students forward, et cetera. That's part of the goal. So your vision, I assume, will have to do with students students performing at high academic levels as well as other categories. Okay, so how do we get from where we are now to where we want to be? And that's where you're really dependent on your superintendent and her staff to help you figure out what that can be. So just as board members, you're not going to be able to have enough information as a board member alone. Your superintendent will give you the information that you need to really determine what those goals will look like. And then making sure that all of your programs, so earlier when you were talking about budget, you essentially touched on this too. So like we said, you know, the budget, you should be able to look at your budget and have some idea of what your vision is. Well, how you allocate each district program's resources should also give us a sense of what you prioritize. And then this is related to two as well, that you've engaged in the community. Like when you do strategic planning and you are making sure that you're talking to your entire community. And as you've heard me say before, what I think is equally important, if not more important than what they're telling you is what are you not hearing and who are you not hearing from is just as significant as what you are hearing. And then this is just like what Dr. Stebbelfield said earlier, then the progress monitoring that comes after you've identified those goals and you're working toward them. Then progress monitoring will help you know if changes need to be made, if resources need to be allocated differently, you know, where to go next. So this section both drives every other section and is totally dependent on every other section that we're talking about. So I'll give you a few minutes now to talk about these. There are seven points, obviously, and this one, so it may take just a little bit longer.
All right, we're going to bring everyone back. I think Ms. Humphries and Ms. Russell are back, so we'll get started.
Okay, so let's start with Ms. Humphrey and Ms. Russell again. What did you think was a real area of strength in this category?
This one was pretty simple for us. We don't think that any of these are an area of strength, but all of this is an area for growth. We need to identify a community-based plan that speaks to the language of our constituents, that speaks to this board's goals and vision. And truly, we felt like we may need to start all over. And so, yeah, that's where we are, is this is a glaring opportunity for growth right here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Drew, Ms. Clark?
So we agree with the exception of one, and Ms. Drew is going to speak to number six.
We felt like that we do try to secure the support of our community in what we're trying to do and trying to find everything that we need as resources to be able to make sure that we meet the needs and the expectations of what is expected.
All right, thank you. Ms. Page, Mr. Lopez?
Okay, we felt that we need to work on all of it. Because we haven't had time to really do it the justice that it deserves. We've been putting out fires, we've been dealing with COVID. And we're all, you know, we got a new superintendent, we're running, and time is what we need more of. And we got to work smarter because our vision and goals aren't clear. We're not clear, totally. We know we want to educate our kids, we want them to get the best education possible. And we don't really talk about what we do well. What are the good things that we've accomplished? What are the, and we got a lot to improve on, but we just got to take the time and make sure we're all on the same page. Our vision, our vision, how do they merge? What are we doing? And we just haven't had the time to do it. We've spent so much time doing so many other stuff.
And you raise a good point. It is important to identify what you do really well because you don't want the things that you do well to get lost, you know, when you go in and start examining. So if something's been working well and meeting the needs of students, you want to make sure that that's captured so that you can look at how that fits into going forward as well. And so I think what I hear all of you speaking to really is the importance of going back and looking at the urgent and the important quadrant. And once again, outside of your ability to control, but there's been a lot of forced emphasis on urgent that while important, might not be as important as some other things. And don't read into that any dismissal of risk and need. But it prevented you, like every board in the United States, from placing the emphasis on some other needs and being able to move forward. And it is really important for your superintendent and administrative staff to be able to give you what you want and do what you need is for them to have a sense of what your priorities are, which is through this process of identifying that vision. So I don't think this is a chicken or the egg scenario. I think this really has to kind of come first for all of those other things to be able to happen and function well. So this will be.
You gave us a recommend, sorry, you gave us a recommendation for the, you said that you could come back and help us with the board meeting piece, which we overwhelmingly all agree that's probably an area of growth. So what would be your recommendation in addressing this piece of it? What do we do next? Like what should be our action item for what's next?
So I do want to make sure that, you know, I do use the information from the more formal evaluation as well, but I suspect we all know what it will show. And certainly at KSB, we do do this regularly with districts, or you may have other means. But you also have other data too.
So Marsha, as you're looking at the recommendation, a couple of things I would suggest that we take into consideration because I do think because of all of the transition, the community will feel like we just did this, is what I have heard from people around certain things. So one, the recommendations that come back from the final KU report, which we should get in the next week or so, will have bigger recommendations. And then, two, the process that the district went through, although I know people have different feelings about it for the last strategic plan, I don't think you can just throw those things out because that is what resonated with the community. So I think you take those two, and that's where when we reengage the community and board members and staff, is how do we prioritize these things and whatever that process.
So those two things, a current strategic plan, the KU report, and other data sources all become part of this vision and goal-setting process. So the process does not necessarily define upfront how you get the information. So you're going to look at existing data sources that you already have. And I do think, like what Anna just said, it is very important to not just throw out something that was done in recent years because then you lose credibility with your community.
I would agree. No, you don't want to throw it away. I don't think we use it enough.
Right.
It's there, it's what we said we're going to do. But do, I'm not saying we don't do it. I just think we need to say it more and use that lingo and get them used to that language, that this is what we do. We don't do that enough.
And because there have been some pretty significant changes in the meantime, there may be other kinds of data sources that you need to add to it. And I'm sure everyone in your community would recognize that as well. So it doesn't, I mean, people have survey fatigue, generally speaking, I assume they do, in Kansas City, Kansas as well. And some of the other kinds of processes where you pull some of your focus groups together may or may not be, you know, the best way to go. But having a conversation, because sometimes it can be information that can be gleaned like school by school. Families are always much more responsive, like to their child's school than to that bigger concept of a district that seems a little more impersonal than my child's school, where my child's teachers are. So it's about how do you supplement that if you feel like you don't have enough information in a particular area or there have been so many changes, you're not sure it still applies. I think having a conversation about what else do we need to know as we go forward.
Yeah, so I would agree, and I by no means was saying throw it away. I'm saying, are you saying, like what are the concrete action steps? So is it that we start at number one on the strategic plan and we as a board review that and look at what that looks like? That's what I'm trying to get to, like what are the actual action steps to improve? Like what next steps do we, because we can say vision and goal-setting, but who leads this work? If it's our responsibility to be setting the vision and the goals, do we as a board need to make time to be going through each of those strategic plans and identifying areas of improvement, areas of strength? I guess that's the guidance I'm looking for, not so much saying, oh, let's redo the whole process because I do think the community, in whatever shape, way, or form that it was created, was present. But I just am trying to figure out how do we move this step forward if this is what we're saying as a board is important to clarify.
So typically, your superintendent and your board president are going to be your leaders with typically, almost always, with an outside facilitator. So, I mean, it could be KSB, it could be another kind of organization. But you almost always, or districts usually need an outside facilitator as well because there are some things that are maybe difficult to manage if you don't have an outside person that's not a board member or administrator to help facilitate it. You need kind of that, an objective person. So, but once again, it can be a for-profit company. It could be a nonprofit that offers that service. It could be KSB. There are a variety of ways, but usually the superintendent and the board president want somebody to help them walk through that process. But that becomes the first step. And that first part of it is having a conversation about what information do we have and what do we not have? And that's where I go back to what I said earlier, who have you not heard from? You know, because if there are holes in the information you have, that may be a place that you need to go back and do some sort of more intentional outreach to make sure you've heard voices that you haven't heard from in the past, depending on how the process was done.
I definitely don't want to mess up your agenda, and this may just be a note for later. We talk a lot.
We talk a lot as a board about having time, and so I don't know how other boards accomplish that because the more meetings you get on your calendar, sometimes it, it can be overwhelming for people. But, but the amount of work that we have to do will take that time. So I'm not asking you to answer the question. I'm just asking that maybe at some point, we have the conversation of like, where, where does that happen to be able to get those things done? Some people's schedule allows for it more than others, so.
Yeah, and, and that is a conversation you need to have. Some districts have two primary meetings a month, one's a business meeting and, and one is for work in terms of board development or, or this kind of thing. When you're doing your initial work here, it usually does add additional time. The reason I mention dividing up the meetings, but, but it takes a longer process of planning because this goes back to where we talked about how your board meetings function, to, to get things in a place where you can have one meeting a month that's your primary business meeting, except maybe you have a consent agenda for the second meeting that doesn't take much time because it's all items that, that typically just require a, a quick vote. But I, I'm gonna guess that it's gonna be like a lot of things that happen when you have new leadership and you come in and you start to make changes in the organization, in staffing, in process. You don't see the result of those changes, you, for, for a long time. I mean, certainly not in the first year because it takes time, it takes the first year to begin to make the changes, and many of the changes can't even be implemented until a second year. So to see the outcomes from those changes, you know, you're, you're talking about at least a three-year process. That, that's true with this as well, you know? So you begin this process of really seeing if your vision is agreed upon, what other information you need to really define it. And then it's, it's gonna be in the second year that you really, well, and now we're almost in May, so clearly the second year, where you really are defining what it is and then doing the goal setting related to that. So it's not even gonna be till year three that some of the things are, can be implemented. So in some cases, the soonest you could see anything's gonna be year four. And so we have to remember that if it were easy and fast, you would've already done it. You know, what's hard is sticking to it and holding tight when you're not yet seeing the results because you have to give them, give it the time it takes to let the change happen. And if, if you give up before you get to that point, then you just kind of start all over again. And so I think sticking to a change process can be important, and, and this becomes part of it. This isn't something you throw together and then move on down the road. So, other thoughts?
I would, I would agree. I, I think, you know, just to piggyback on what you were sharing, you know, I think something that Dr. Stubblefield has helped us with is creating that calendar, I don't know if that's the right word, but really mapping out what he, what we're reporting or what we're bringing to the board on a consistent basis and what that looks like for the year. I remember she shared that early on with us, and, and it does take time, right? Because there's so many others Ms. Page alluded to, fires or, you know, things that come up that we need to get to, and so it disrupts a little bit of that flow. But I think, you know, we've tried to, to stick with what's been set in front of us and, right, it takes time and patience, and sometimes it's a little frustrating, but I, but I do think, you know, that's one thing that I've really appreciated is that structure that she's really helped to bring and present to us, say, "Hey, here's, here's what this is gonna look like." Also asking for input, right, to say, "Do you want this to look differently? Do you want these reports at different times of the year?" But I think over time, that'll get us in a habit of where we are having a business meeting and then an informational meeting and then, you know, creating, you're not creating more time, but you're essentially making the most efficient use of the time by bringing things up, you know, more with intentionality. So I, that's one thing that I've really appreciated, and she's helped us get in the habit of this first year. But it takes time to, to get there, I think.
Yeah. I, I just wanna add, I think to Rachel's point, once we identify clearly what our goals are and our priorities, those can drive the meeting, right? So like if we have five big goals and we say, this, these five months, here's the update on goal one, two, and then if it's twice a year, you can better separate the business from, like, if we're reporting on our goals, it's not necessarily like, "Here's student services." If it's SEL, we are showing the data, academic behavior, all of it in that one collective report. It's a larger report, but then you don't have, and then we can tie like, "And here's the return on investment, here's the dollars that are aligned to it." So it would streamline it so that, because right now, I truly feel like we give stuff like in pieces and parts, and then you are pulling it back together, and that often can lead to confusion for, you know, staff's part and board and, uh, board members as well. Like we all are like, I think we share that then, and this is how it's connected to this, but it's not cohesive. But if we streamline our meetings like that, to Ms. Page's point, it would alleviate meetings going very long because you are not giving multiple reports in isolation. And so I think that is something that regardless of what goals we have, I'm, my hope is that we can create a system, and I did when we were at NASV, see a district that at every board meeting, they have that data and that return on investment tied to whatever is being shared, and then you just have the ongoing budget documents that are easy to navigate or look at throughout the year. But that's something that I think we can definitely accomplish.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you sharing that, Dr. Stubblefield, because that's exactly, as you were talking, I was thinking about the strategic plan, and when I pull up number one, it says like something about social, not something, it does say, uh, social emotional well-being of children. And so then I was relating that to the student services update or the behi- or the SEL update. And so I think you and I's minds are like in that, in, in that approach of how we could potentially relate those things to the strategic plan and the department updates that are being provided as we also learned that in ASB, so.
Okay, so the, the next area then is budget and finance. Four points here. And, and I'm actually not going to have you break out. You just had a budget meeting before this. I think budget's at the front of your mind, and, and we'll, we'll get your sense of this from the, the formal report. But these are the questions that will be in the evaluation. And so you can see how it ties to vision here because you're, you're looking at how you're going to prioritize what you're doing and tying that into these long-range forecasts. So for, for your budget to be done well, you have to consider where it is that you want to go. Now, obviously, there will be things that you'll be required to do based on legislation or some federal regulations or some things that may not have been decisions that you would have made independent of those. But almost always, you can see how it does tie in to the goals that, that you've established. So I'm going to just move us past this because I'll, we'll collect this from you. But I do want to touch base on this last category since you have a brand-new superintendent. And this really is the whole fire tower metaphor in terms of superintendent's role and board's role, and then how they work together. So let's have you go into your groups here for a few minutes, and let's talk about these five points.
All right. Let's go ahead and come back. Thank you.
Okay, so I want to jump to number four really quick before I hear from you to say, in order for number four to truly be a strength, you have to have done some vision and goal setting because the performance expectations that you evaluate your superintendent on should be based on the goals that you've set for your district. So it's very hard to do this really well unless you've identified what it is that you want the outcomes to be essentially. So let's start with Ms. Clark. Ms. Drew, what, what did you see as an area of strength?
Okay, first of all, we, if I'm not mistaken, we looked at number four as a strength. I'm sorry, number three as a strength, whereas the board with the assistance of the superintendent, we have clear written expectations as far as what we want to do.
Okay. So, and, and this is a tricky one. So, so you have those now, so you may have clear expectations, but they may not be based yet on, on what your vision is for the district. So it can be a strength and an area of growth because the task is done. So if we think about it as like technical versus adaptive, the technical part could be a strength, but perhaps the adaptive part on which it's based is still an area that needs a little more work. So it's really good, though, that you've already built in an expectation that this is done and everyone knows this is something that you do, so that's-
But doesn't that give you an opportunity, even if you feel as though it's a strength? And where the growth comes in, it keeps you on a level plane that you will work toward achieving what you want?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's much better to start from this position. So it's like a, a habit or a practice that's already implemented. What's just gonna change is perhaps the content of it.
Okay.
Okay, what did you see as the primary area of growth in this?
We did not choose a primary. We said all, all of them really are areas of growth. We did talk about number three being where we were. If we had to choose one, we were a little bit stronger. But all of them being areas of growth. So I don't think we necessarily label one. I, if I had to pick one at this point, I would say number, number five because it's not a consistent message out there in our public. And so we have, you know, information's coming from all different places, and even in one of the conferences, it talked about being united in your responses back to your community and how you're redirecting them to the appropriate people. And if you're having problems getting solved, things solved through those appropriate people, then we need to escalate those things to our superintendent to work with her staff to make sure we're consistent.
Right.
Okay, all right. Ms. Humphries, Ms. Russell, what did you see as an area of strength?
An area of strength we saw was three and four.
Okay.
And as, as Rachel reminded me, this is her first year on the board. So that's, when you first have to evaluate your superintendent, you have to have those, you have to be able to see what the goal was clearly written. And we do that before we do the evaluation. And then we do it at least annually, and with a new superintendent, it's, I think it's every six months almost, right Greg? And so we, we do that. I think that's- So we, we do that. I think that's, that's a strength of ours.
Okay. Yeah. So within the first 60 days and then again later in the year. So once again, it's, it's the habit, the system's in place. So, so it's the, the content again that needs a little work. Okay. Mr. Lopez, Ms. Page.
Yeah, we were pretty aligned actually, Ms. Page and I kind of started when she, Ms. Page said, very similar to what you said, you know, all these are tied to our vision. So we really have to get our vision and goals set in order to really do these well. But we thought, you know, number one was a strength. Again, the technical piece of number four is a strength because we do it again, but are, is it really tied to our vision and to our goals? So, yeah, so those were, we identified some of them as strengths on the technical side of it. It's, but again, tying them to our vision and goals.
Okay. Good. So I think like if you think from the perspective of your superintendent, when the goals are not defined, even though you may have said what the expectations are, but if the goals supporting those are not in place, it's kind of like shooting baskets, but there's a curtain in front. So you don't know if the ball ever goes in.
Mm-hmm.
So you hope you're kind of getting where you want to be, but it's hard to know for sure because it wasn't, it's not clear where you can see it. So, so we'll, we are running out of time here. I don't want to keep you past your time and I know you're tired.
Yes.
This is something I could just send you to reflect on as individuals. It, this is, aligns well with, you know, the research on the total board functionings, but these are kind of like in, as individual board members, what some individual accountability would be. And I could send this to Leslie and have her forward this to you. The bottom line of this, the whole reason for doing the evaluation is just, are we in our oversight role? Are we overstepping? You know, where are we? Once again, are you're trying to shoot baskets and you can't see the basket unless you collect some data to know. So I, I did want to follow up on this idea of the research done by Michael Fulon and Davis Campbell where they looked at nationally, at high functioning boards of education that were accomplishing the kinds of outcomes that they wanted to see. And over this long-term study, they really determined that being cohesive with your unity of purpose, driven by a moral imperative is what it takes. And so, you know, people run for the board for lots of reasons. But what they found is no matter why somebody ran in the first place, once they've become part of that team and they're working together with a unified purpose, that they have outcomes in which students achieve and they see higher levels of achievement. So it doesn't always matter why you started, but it's just that working together. Now, and as we've talked about before, it doesn't mean you agree all the time. And, and much of the richness of decisions made by a board are when you come together with very different opinions and ideas because you come from very different perspectives. And it's the sharing of that and finding a, a common next step that makes it possible for kids to be successful. Because as you look at your community, it's going to be even more diverse than you are as a board, you know? So, so you start with that. So these are the things, and I'm moving very quickly, but these are the things that sometimes make it hard to stay coherent and, and that, and I'll, I'll send this to Leslie for you to look at too. But, but these are the little things that can trip you up sometimes, you know, that you want to stay cognizant of, you know, as you're going through your week to week, you know, day to day board member role. And, and I think eight's the thing that we talk about where, you know, in the end, once there's at least a four-three vote, then you say, this is the board's decision because collectively this is what you determined to do. And, and your staff and your community feel safer with your leadership if they know that you do act with one voice once the decision has been made. And there can be a whole lot of disagreement before you get to that point. But once that decision has been made, that also doesn't mean that you don't determine a point down the road where you revisit it. You know, not, your, every decision you make doesn't have to be for eternity. You, you evaluate what's happening, changes, and determine if, if something different should be done. One thing that the pandemic may have done is show us the need to reevaluate and look at new data on a consistent basis to see what our decision should be. So just kind of, I, I'm repeating the same points here, but remember that when you go out as an individual and you're talking to people in the community, you're sharing your opinion unless it's something that you've talked about as a board and collectively decided. And I, I think that we've addressed all of these. This is to really emphasize if you're on social media. So I don't know if that's a, a big issue here. But we've had some situations with boards where we have a violation of Open Meetings Act where people will post how they think the vote should go before the vote has been held. So, you know, just remember that your Facebook page does not represent the Board of Education. It represents your opinions and you're speaking as an individual. And we talked about conflict earlier. These are just some points in terms of how to use conflict and how, how to help you handle it. But I, these are things I'll send to Leslie. So don't feel like you have to read the screen really quickly. And with the board, obviously, we have to be careful that we don't bring too many of you together outside of a board meeting, but two people can come together if, if they can maybe represent two primary points that the board is debating and then bring that conversation back to the board so that the business is done again, where the public can see it being done. And this is just to support the idea of, you know, doing an evaluation annually so that you continue to examine how you are functioning as a board and what you. I will send those last few slides that were really just kind of summary points to Leslie and let her distribute those to you. Questions, thoughts? Let's see, am I, did I go late? Whoops, I did go six minutes.
No, you're, you're good. Thank you, Dr. Weisman. Any questions or thoughts for Marcia while she's here with us? I can't see my screen. So if anyone on the screen has a question, please just jump in.
I don't have any questions. Just want to say thank you for presenting this information. It helps us to be able to, to reflect, to decide the direction that we want to go in and, and then to make changes if we have to. It's always good to be able to just sometimes get that information. Thank you so much.
So, so Marcia, for, for next steps, you, you will send up the slides, but then there's also an assessment that you're going to want us to take. What is your timing on that? How would you?
So it's probably depending on the control of the challenge, even being the order of presenting the results. So just to make sure there's not time for you to take anything in time.
Okay. So why don't you, I, and Dr. Stubblefield touch base just to see what's next. I know we have the May 20th date. Ms. Deion King was here kind of observing today as well. She's going to do a session on May 20th with the board as a follow-up for part of our development and part of the, our self-evaluation. But we can figure out if, if that would be, if there would be some time for Marcia, for you to kind of walk through at least an initial part of the assessment, but then also board, we've discussed a potential June meeting to follow up as well with some of this work. So we'll have more information. We'll have the assessment that we'll make sure everyone has access to so that we can fill, you can fill it out at your time. And then we will compile that information and data and get it back to the board. So.
If you could, that Leslie now, if you could, paper, pencil, copy of the assessment or if you're from the board, do you know you're submitting that?
Those of us online can't hear anything that she said for the last like five or seven minutes.
Can you hear me now?
No.
I was brilliant. I just want you to know, everything I said the last seven minutes was really profound and brilliant, just so you know that. So essentially we'll, we'll do the, I'll send the evaluation out. If you want a paper, pencil, copy, let Leslie know. We'll schedule the time then to come back in and go over the report that sets the basis for the goal setting, the next step for goal setting. What, what else been in the last?
I think Randy repeated what you may have said at the podium before. But when you spoke before he spoke, we didn't hear. And I am still trying to navigate how to figure out who I need to contact on virtual. So apologies.
Okay.
But no, I think we're good. I was just saying, when you were starting to talk again, we could not hear you. So.
Okay. So I will send some slides to Leslie to send to you. So that may have been the other part. So if you missed some of those slides, you'll, you'll get the, they just emphasize points we already talked about.
All right. Well, if there are no other questions, again, thank you, Marcia, for your time today. And thank you, board members, Dr. Stubblefield and staff. We will come together again on May 3rd for our special meeting. That will be via Zoom. So make sure that's on your calendar. We'll make sure that, that everyone has the link. Thanks for your time today, everybody. And so we are adjourned for the day. Thank you.